Well, let's call the meeting to order and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda or add anything to it? Anybody have anything they want to add?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For review of the December 9th meeting minutes. Any additions, corrections to that?
Motion to approve, 12:09 minutes.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And also the minute from December 16th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December 16th. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Open public comment? Anyone have anything? Steve?
Well, I can repeat my compliment about the front steps.
Oh, yes, yes. It seems to be, it seems nice to get back to our home office. Invited guests, we have Elizabeth Marks from Vermont Community Foundation. Welcome. And we had the packet of information, Stan copied for us, I assume. Would you like to fill us in a little bit on the foundation?
I'm happy to. And knowing you have the packet in advance, I'll try to keep it crisp and kind of go through the highlights, but obviously welcome any questions anyone has. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I thought I'd just start with, we, the Vermont Community Foundation, our core community mission is to build meaningful assets, to build healthy and vital Vermont communities. That's our core role. We consist of more than 800 funds, which are basically endowments or set funds. Totally, they range from $25,000 to tens of millions of dollars, and we, in total, are a $320 million organization. And some people have asked, we are incorporated, it's not for profit, if that's a question you're on. So why do we work with nonprofits and municipalities? Why is that important to us? Well, when you think about it, they are our primary partners. Most of, we make about $18 million in grants, mostly to the state of Vermont.
I'm going to ask you if you would come over here.
Oh, sure.
So that the TV camera can see you.
Oh, my goodness.
If you would.
You bet. I would be happy to.
I think you still address the board.
Okay, sure. It always feels right to look at you. That's great. So again, we make about $18 million in either grants or distributions, which relates to right now having an endowment or a reserve fund with us. And so those are the institutions, not-for-profits and municipalities, who do the work, whether it's, you know, social service programs, environmental organizations, libraries, for example, land trusts, that's where municipalities are most likely to come in as partners to us. But they're very important to us. We also commit 5% of our assets to invest in the state of Vermont. That's an important part of our mission, investing. And that includes projects such as affordable housing, downtown revitalization, or the startup of businesses. That's our core mission. I want to refer, in your packet was an annual report, and I actually brought a few here if there's anybody in the audience who wanted to take a look at it. Our annual report really has a lot more about all of our fiscal statements, which are also available online if you want to look at them. We're very transparent in our operations. It also talks about our progress and investments that we make in the community. But I want to jump right in. Your question was, if you had the proceeds, either it is the funds you have right now, where you sold land, and you wanted to invest them with us, what would that look like? And our recommendation would be a reserve fund. And what that is, it's a fund that creates, you put the pool of capital, you put the fund in our investments, and you take an annual distribution from that fund. It sets the savings aside and allows you to grow it in the marketplace in order to appreciate its value more so than you would get in a typical savings or money market account. You can draw down from a reserve fund as much or as little money as you want. We talked, you asked a question about what we recommend, but you can draw down as much or as little as you want. Currently, we recommend drawing down approximately 5% a year if you want to maximize income for you to spend on the needs that you have in the community, but also make sure the assets are growing. There is an alternative with us to set it up as an endowment fund, but those funds are locked down, meaning you cannot just draw down the full assets. And I don't think that's consistent with what your goals are. This publication which you received, or received a copy of, really gives you the full details of what the funds look like, for your record. What happens to the investment? So the way that Vermont Community Foundation works is that we have pooled investments. Your funds are tracked separately, and you can access them through an online account, or we will send you written statements, like you would with any investment product. But the funds are actually pooled into a larger pool. We have a long-term investment pool that has a seven-year investment horizon, a socially responsible investment pool, which also works on a seven-year horizon, and a midterm investment pool, which works on a somewhat shorter three- to five-year horizon. And again, in your materials, this is what you may recall seeing, this document here that talks about those pools. What is the advantage of working in an organization that has these pools of investment? We have, because we are a $320 million operation, we have world-class investment managers. We have an overarching, our board of directors is obviously overarching, responsible for investments. We have an investment committee, like all nonprofits, our board members and our investment committee are not paid, they don't profit from it, but we pulled some of the best minds to advise us on where to invest the money. And then that group invests in multiple money managers. So what you're doing is getting a very big diversification of where the investments are going, and we can drop and add investment managers as their performance is either strong or not as strong. With that pooled investment, it also buffers you against volatility in the market, because you aren't, it's just not one set of investments you have, it's a much broader pool. Also, we have an actively managed portfolio, so we can actively change, drop and add portfolios. We're not just indexed, we look to maximize performance over time. And one of the other things I sent to you, Stan, was, you have, we have an investment policy statement that you can read, it's, again, another thing, all of these materials are really available online to you, but, so you, you know, typically what we find with not-for-profits and even many of our fund holders is that developing investment strategy may not be something that's your specific expertise. So that investment strategy has been developed by our investment committee and over the years tweaked and developed to maximize performance. So when you're investing with us, you're adopting that investment policy, whether it's the long-term fund, or if the socially responsible fund, or a midterm fund. The natural question then is, okay, so how is the performance? So there too, in your packet, these are the sheets, just to reference them if you're looking at them, that show the investment performance. So we'll be coming out soon with, of course, our fourth quarter, but so now we're looking at our third quarter performance. For the long-term pool, which is the seven-year horizon, over the last seven years, there's been a 7.2% return, over five years, 6.1%, and over three years, 7.5%. Our socially responsible pool, over seven years, has been 7.6%, five years, 6.7%, and three years, 7.5%. There's also, the midterm pool is available too. I don't think that fits your investment horizon, and I understand that you're looking to investment for the long term, but that is an option. That's more typically, for example, someone might come to us, they're doing a capital campaign, they're putting the money, and they know they're going to, they're building it up in order to spend it on something else, a shorter-term frame. But it is an option for you to put some or all of the money into a midterm pool as well. One thing available to you with us, these are posted, again, they're sent to you, they're posted on your online account, they can be sent to you if you prefer the paper. The other thing is that our investment manager has a quarterly call. It's open to any fund holder, any individual, so that the town, it's, you can call up, you can ask questions, it's not just passive, you can ask questions to them. And recordings of those calls are put on our website, so you can actually go back 18 months if you're interested in listening to any of those calls. But we, again, we do strive for transparency, and we are open to questions if people have them about our investments. Another question I was asked to respond to is, what's the expected revenue stream? Do you mind if I grab a drink of water? So this is the way we approach not-for-profit and municipal pools. We recommend, our board recommends, a distribution of up to 5% of your rolling 36-month average value of the fund, so basically that's three years. And why do we look at 5%? So I just talked about those returns that have averaged around the 7%, a little over 7%. What that 5% does is it maximizes the amount you might have in a given year, but it doesn't have you spending at all, so that some of that you're folding back in, so that value of your, of the fund continues to grow over time, because obviously there's inflation over time. So you want your fund to grow, but you're also trying to draw down as much as you can to let it grow. Now, some fund holders choose to take a 4% or 4.5% distribution, that is entirely your choice, that's the policy of the board if you invested the money. We simply, our board suggests the 5%. And the other, the reason we do a 36-month rolling average is that, again, funds are done for the long term. We understand that municipality or a nonprofit is looking to use that money for some aspect of its programs or operations, right? So you're not looking to see big fluctuations over time. So the 36 average means the distribution stays relatively stable over time, right? This is very important. Think about the 2008 market crash. Our fund holders continue to receive distributions. Yes, they went down a little bit, and it would take a little bit longer for them to go back up as the market increased, but it meant that organizations that were depending on that revenue for some aspect of operations didn't have to suddenly go, wow, you know, that revenue was suddenly caught very drastically. It was moderately impacted. So it's, again, it's sort of our thinking, we take, try to take a long-term view and think about not only the health of your investment, but also the health of the revenue you're receiving in order to run your operations. And, oh, and I guess if you want to specific, if it was a five, excuse me, if it's a $1, $5 million investment as an example, 5% would be $75,000 a year. If you decided to be more conservative and do 4%, that's $60,000. Again, you could choose what that rate would be. And you can change your mind. You could also decide, indeed, we've had funds where if they didn't need revenue for a year for some reason or less, they would take a smaller distribution and then grow the size of their assets. You can also add to the fund at any time. I was asked how liquid the funds are. That's the interesting thing of being part of a large pool as well. You can at any time request your funds. We, you know, it's, we're at $320 million, at any time, we're taking in income and we're sending out grant checks. So it's only a matter, we have a regular schedule, of course, for investing checks, but it's not a matter of, in the direct way, we do sell assets in order to pay grants and pay things out. If you were to liquidate the entire pool, we might need a little bit more time, but essentially, we're quite, we allow for the fact that there's a fair amount of movement of money coming in and coming out of the foundation. So it's not a matter of, we are selling specifics, I guess, to be specific, not your specific stocks, it's a bigger pool, so we're selling the stocks that we need to, that are the most logical to sell at that time. And then what's the cost of a fund? So in the sheets where I showed you the investment performance, these are net management fees. So these are net investment management fees. So fees have already been taken out of these funds that you're seeing here. So this, these are the returns that actually accrued to the other fund holders in the past. Our fee on a reserve fund is 1%, at 100 basis points, if that's the language you use, but 1%. It's 0.8% on an endowment, that's because there's less work, because the fund is, you're getting a straight distribution this year, but it's 0.8%. Yes?
Is that 1% a month or a year?
Oh, for the year. Yeah. Yep. And that, I want, I knew you wanted me to be quick, so I sort of, that's my whirlwind tour, but I'm sure you may have some other questions about any aspect of this.
Is the fee that you're talking about only on the returns each year?
The fee is on the, on the principal, it's on the entire assets. Yeah. And actually, the reality is it steps down, is a fund, if a fund gets larger, there's a little bit reduced fee, but for most fund holders, it's going to be about 1%. Good question, yeah. Any questions about how this works?
Do you have any other municipalities?
We do. The most common, well, the most common are libraries, cemeteries, so, you know, municipal properties, and you're probably not surprised to learn, there's all sorts of interesting structures, because you know you have these what are called quasi-governmental organizations, like a library that may have a select trustee. So we have slightly different fund agreements, we understand that, and we work with you to figure out what's the right structure. And usually, it's endowment funds, like library endowment funds, cemetery endowment funds, sometimes town lands, town forests, that kind of thing, those are the most common. And then there's some funds, and Tinmouth is the one that's closest, town of, fund from North Bennington are like this, where they have a fund that is actually administered through the town, it's a little bit different, but that's a technicality, but the town, it's, and they run a scholarship program, and it also supports their community center and its programming. So, you know, what you do with the money is really, has to do with, obviously, either what you agree as a board, or the only other thing we look for is if monies were given to with restrictions. We will always honor whatever the donor added. And very often, one of the other things, there's a number of services that come with having a fund with us, and one of them is we work on testamentary funds, and charitable gift annuities, and other kinds of planned gifts, because, oh, rescues, that's another one, sorry, rescues, libraries, those are places that you find that sometimes town members, you know, really value for their communities, they're important to them, and they may leave monies to the fund. And so we can do all of these, you know, other kinds of instruments, if that's helpful. So if you say, ah, somebody's asked us about this, and we'll say, okay, fine, we can call them and talk to them, because in some cases, those are very private matters, and so they can talk to us and not have to share with you, you know, private financial matters.
Sounds, you know, you're quite flexible in working with different organizations and...
This is Vermont, there's a lot of variety here. We're also pretty region-based, you know, I live in southern Vermont, you know, we, our, so our office is in Middlebury, and that's where all of our core staff is, our finance staff and so forth are up there. Oh, one of the nice things is, that staff is always available by phone, there's people in the office all the time. I tend to be more on the road like this, which is good, because I can show up and other people can show up, but you always have the advantage of somebody that, at the office too, who can answer, you know, immediate, either fiscal or, you know, kinds of questions.
Any other questions? No? Well, thank you very much. Yes?
I think you said, I think I understood, is that you have a single pool, or three pools?
Correct.
Everybody's in one of those pools.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't need a investment policy other than your investment policy.
Correct. So you're essentially, and again, this will be, again, how your governance structure works, essentially, you're adopting that investment policy by using us, that's right.
So there's no day-to-day that we worry about the investment?
No, no. That's what, that's what, that's essentially the service you're buying through us, is that we worry about that, you know, and we have orders of double-checking, because we have oversight over investment managers, so that we're making sure that all of them are functioning well.
And the only other question was the model investment policy you had at the end of this.
Yeah.
Are we plagiarizing copyrighting or...
Oh, so the, oh, let's see. That whole document is the investment policy. So I'm playing with what you're referring to.
We've got a sample investment policy here.
See, the investment, the investment policy I sent you, or two, I think I said, the socially responsible one and the long-term, are the ones that are active right now. The socially responsible is just about to be updated, it's reviewed, of course, periodically by the board and investment committee.
You have my question on that.
That's okay, well, you know, if any, if you have any follow-up questions, whether...
Somebody gave us a model.
Oh, okay, okay. If there's, anyway, if you have any questions like that, or others, just feel free to send an email, you know, Stan's been, knows how to reach me, by phone and email, and I'd be happy to follow up with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you giving me the time.
Well, thank you. At least you got some good weather to come down, and it wasn't, you know, it isn't slippery or what have you.
Yeah. That other day we were slated for was not so that we drive today.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yes, that was somebody else's.
Yeah.
My fault, I should ask you.
Did you get, you did, we not, should I leave this?
I believe you did.
All right, I'll leave here. Should I, how few other business I seem to do?
Sure. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
Yes.
I'll let you enjoy your cookies.
And Tom, somebody strong-armed you to...
No, I was, I was, very politely, in fact, just joking, about I was interested in volunteering for consideration for the planning commission, and considered a bit before I made the commitment, and I wanted to make sure it was something that I would be committed to, so that's why I'm here tonight. I reached out to Stan and he's put me on the agenda, so I'm here humbly asking for consideration.
We had a member resign, so we were hoping Tom could...
Yeah, no.
...take Mary Gilligan's place.
Yeah, I think that would be great to, that you're stepping up, and, you know, you've been involved in another aspect of this a while back, so that's great, so we'd...
We need a motion?
Probably, yes.
Make a motion to appoint Tom Doty to the planning commission?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gee, we didn't find anybody opposed, Tom. Well, thank you very much, and appreciate your coming in to...
My first meeting will be next week, correct, January 2nd?
Yes.
I will forward you a copy of the draft that Tom Plainer just came in this week.
Great.
We're in the process of approving that.
Well, thank you.
We'll give you sign to read over the holidays.
Well, same to you, Tom. Good stuff.
The rink has apparently been working hard to make some ice, and glad to see that with vacation coming.
They had to close up, what have you, but...
I think they're going to reopen, yeah, and, I mean, I don't see where soft ice is, you know.
Yeah, I don't think they've had a real chance to build a good base, but...
Right, right, so it's nice that...
And as soon as they can open, I'm sure the place will be packed, so...
We also had the Christmas tree lighting in the park last Sunday. There was about 20 people, I'm guessing, close to that. Fire department opened up the fire station for us, and the Girl Scouts came, sang carols, and then we had cookies and hot chocolate with them on, so, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, moving right along into the highway department, Stan.
You've got the groups that people tell their law, and they do keep a law on a daily basis, so they're summarizing in the morning.
Now we're back on again.
Yeah.
We had five different days that we were ice and snow, some of it was light, some of it was heavy. The big thing is because of their flexibility in hours, we ended up with five hours of overtime out of those five events. So they are staggering their time, which is what they did last year, they're not necessarily pushing for overtime all the time. And replaced all the plow blades with the new ones when we had a chance. Two items that they were working with the sewer department on a plug-up on Garden Street, they were over at Casella trying to find a shut-off valve, which they did not find, wasn't here. What it is, is a four-inch valve, a four-inch line is coming off of the six-inch line, the town line, goes into the building, and there's no valve on it.
Did we put a valve?
No, couldn't get to it.
We've talked with them, and this is their responsibility, it's not a two-inch service or quarter-inch house service, this is a four-inch fire protection service.
Okay.
So we suggested to them, they can put one on without, the big one is if we stop service, we got to cut it off at the post office, which fortunately is just the post office, the fire department, down to Caris real. So we can shut it off, so they can put a valve in, or they can put an insertion valve in, except that this is old gray cast iron, and they may or may not want to try to do that or not.
It's not copper.
What they thought was, it was a two-inch copper. That's what, inside the building, when it comes through the foundation wall, it's a two-inch copper. Up to the outside of the foundation wall, it's a four-inch cast iron. They thought that the cast iron was a sleeve for a while, but it's not. So they spent a good afternoon out there exploring it, and Casella's aware of what's in the hole. I haven't heard from them as far as where they're going to go, but our suggestion is that this is your issue, because it's more than just a normal service line, it's something special.
And that doesn't include Proctor Place then, if we had to shut that down?
You have to shut it down. The valve is in the basement of Proctor Place.
Right, yeah.
That pipeline goes through the basement of Proctor Place, comes back out again, and then comes down Main Street, it's located between the sidewalk and the building in front of Caris, then it goes out past our parking lot to get to Caris. And again, most of this was just John's time with the Batco, the other guys were out doing something else, so, and the water, water guys were doing the assisting in the Gorham Bridge Road, the water signs back up again. Salt deliveries, every time we get a salt delivery, the guy's got to go down and push it back up and push it back in to keep it from weathering. He usually gets four truckloads at a time, they come in at about 30 tons per truckload. Sometimes Casella's hauling them, sometimes somebody else is hauling them.
Just the comparison sheet, thank you. You know, granted, it's a different salt shed, different volume, but we're running a little more than twice as much as last year.
With the same date.
Yes, well, similar dates, they're a few days apart, your deliveries, yeah.
But the big thing is last year, we were doing one truck at a time.
Yeah.
This year, we're getting four trucks at a time, so I don't know how much is sitting in stockpile down there. If I'd have been quick enough, I'd have asked him, he may see.
Well, I stopped today, it's hard to tell with that new building compared to the old one, but I'm just looking at delivery amounts here in dollars. Yep. Not much we can do about it, slippery.
Just keep track of it. Again, weather conditions, they're continually servicing, washing vehicles, they did do some... They did do some pothole when they had the warm weather. The trees are, trees incorporated here, taking down trees. The most, the one across the street is down. The guys are using it for, for firewood right now, so. Well, not right now, but they're cutting it up rather than taking it to the transfer station and bringing it back. In our tract, this is an annual service. They come in and check their computer and adjust whatever they do. Batteries, the loader wouldn't start one morning, so they had to replace the batteries, yeah. Washing trucks, firewood. The garage now has LED lights. They were put in. Hopefully, we will see a savings down there on those.
Was that done in-house or by an electrician?
Jeff, Jeff Patch did all the work. They're all new ones.
Thank you.
I think his bill was three hundred dollars for replacing them, for his portion, then under was seventeen dollars from Twin State Electric.
He only charges three hundred dollars to change all those lights?
Yeah.
Wow, that was a deal.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
And the resident sand pile, continue to keep that maintained. Our replace, our activities in the future is winter weather, and if we do have a chance, it's roadside brush, and FEMA, we're still working with them. It's interesting, the gentleman from FEMA came down for a meeting. He got a call after he drove into the driveway from his office telling him to come home, because it was snowing down here. And when they told him to go home, he went home.
And he was here?
He was here.
Yeah.
But he, he didn't stay, he stayed for about ten minutes while we talked about one item, and then he said, my instructions are to come home. His, his office is in Williston.
Oh, well, working mysterious ways.
When it snows in Burlington, it snows in the world, Channel 3.
Okay, you've got the, I'll, I'll give you a comparison from now on, rather than just the single this year, you can track against last year. If you wanna track against six years, I can provide that for you, too.
It is what it is, and we've gotta keep the roads safe, so.
Yep. Yep, just curious.
Yep.
Okay, the next thing you've got on there is the intermunicipal agreement. Bruce may be able to talk to this better than I can, because all I'm doing is reading what I'm seeing.
This kind of eliminates some of the questions if, especially if there was a, a FEMA-declared emergency, and they would agree to, you know, use the information out of this, and there's no question, you're not obligated by signing this. It's just saying that, well, if you do, this is how it will be accomplished. And regional planning has been working with all the towns around, and I believe it's March 1st that we have to have this agreed upon if we, we do that. That's the kind of a cutoff date to, to get it done for this year. But it sounds, so it's a practical thing, so it eliminates a lot of the questions. A lot of the towns do their own little agreement, but this expands it a little bit. I, I was looking through that listing of equipment, and that probably, you know, it's this year's list, but some of them, I see here, there's some of them in here that are 2018, so. They, regional planning has a lot of that information anyway, and, and what have you, so. I would think it would be a, a good idea to, to go with this. There are some towns that work with Bennington County and into New York State, and they would have, they would have to work their own out there. But Bennington, I think probably from the discussions and the meetings that I've been to, that I wouldn't be a bit surprised that the Bennington Planning Commission might adopt this, seeing as this has been cleared legally and everything. So they may use this as a template to get their own thing, and that will cover towns like, you know, maybe Paulette, and that wells, what have you. So I wouldn't be a bit surprised if this isn't adopted right through the whole thing.
I wonder if it would be advantage, or whether Stephanie would come over and walk through, because most of this is legalese, and why there's so much legalese in it, I'm not sure. It's more than just calling up your neighbor and saying, I need a truck. We all recognize that if you have a FEMA disaster, you won't get reimbursed for that truck. It's just a good neighbor. But when we have a major disaster, and we have, if we got requested to have two trucks out of town, we might wanna see some compensation for it. Well, this will, we may not care whether we get compensation, but this would provide the vehicle for compensation.
Yeah. And this would set up the, the rate for reimbursement for the equipment, and, you know, if it was one of the bigger truck, or any of the trucks, that would include the man.
Would the reimbursement come through the state, through FEMA, or what, if there's an emergency?
Yes.
Is there a reimbursement rate in here somewhere, or?
No, no, I think there, there is, I'm, I was surprised when I read through this that there wasn't that, but it's an accepted rate that FEMA will, will cover for it.
FEMA has their own rate schedule.
Yeah.
We used it during our disaster that we're working with them now, as to how much they'll pay for different items. They got a full schedule of different pieces of equipment and what they will pay for, so. That's what we, we bill out, when we bill out those. The time for the operators, traditionally in the past, has been the actual salary plus the overhead. And right now, our overhead factor is about fifty percent. We have to derive it for every event by going through what the actual salaries, then what the benefit programs are, and what the... But right now, the benefits add up to about fifty percent of, on, on the admin side. So they allow us to mark up everybody's salary by fifteen percent, fifty percent.
So how does this differ from what we're already getting from FEMA? I mean, how does this benefit us more than working with FEMA when we do have an emergency and we get reimbursement from them?
The only difference is if we head to Pittsburgh with two trucks and a loader, under FEMA's program, we would not be reimbursed. With this agreement, I mean, that's the purpose of this, with this agreement, then we could be, they could be reimbursed through Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh's account. That, that's the only advantage of this at all that I, that I can see, is that, if, if you did it. And even during Irene, we didn't have anybody out of town, we didn't have anybody coming into town. Now, there were some towns who had lots of people, but a lot of them went with contractors, which falls under the program, whatever their actual contract rate is. Yeah.
What's the distance you would travel? I mean, you say Pittsburgh, West Rockland, would you travel to Dambie? Would that be within the parameters of this?
Whoever called you, and if you're available.
Yeah.
You go wherever they, they request. If Dambie's looking for somebody, and we're not having a problem here, we might volunteer to do it and drive to Dambie.
Our people, I'm sorry, go ahead. Our people wouldn't be forced.
No, no.
I think, you know, if you read the first page, it is down somewhere, it says, "This agreement does not obligate you to provide services in the event of a disaster." It's up to you as to whether you go or not. It's, it's those communities who provide services could get reimbursed for the services.
So this list that they put on here for the resources by town, this, this is just telling us what their resources are, this aren't, this isn't saying that these towns are all in agreement, aren't part of this agreement?
No. This, this, this comes out of our, we have a local emergency management plan. As part of that, we have to list all of our equipment, so that we know what we have. And so all she did was pull the pages out of each, each individual plan and stick them in. So if, if you're looking for a excavator, you look down through the quick list and say, whoop, Brandon's got an excavator, a big excavator.
Yeah.
Let's call Brandon if we need it. So this goes into the emergency management packet, so that you know where they, what other people have.
Sounds like we can get out of this anytime, you know, we aren't forced, so I don't have a problem with this. I'm sure it's similar to our fire department, so.
Yes, yeah.
Mutual aid agreement.
Yeah, and it, yeah, it just helps to, you're not, not getting paid for it at all, and that eliminates the question with FEMA of whether you're gonna get sixty bucks or, you know, a hundred bucks. It's all kind of set out there, and the last time they discussed it, I, I bet there was, most every town in the county had a representative there, and so I think it's gonna be accepted without any thing, because you're really not obligated. It's, you wanna help your, a town, maybe it's gonna be thirty, forty miles away. They might have a, a real problem, and we don't have anything, and we have somebody available, and the, and the equipment. It's our total choice to say, yes, we'll, we'll come and help you, and it could turn around very well. So this, it's just been worked over for, oh, I bet, ten years, and this is what has come about, but it's, it had to be a separate agreement rather than like the fire department's mutual aid thing, and they have a thing. I have a motion to sign this and start the ball rolling.
I'll make a motion to approve this mutual aid contract with other towns.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Before we go, we...
I got the original here.
Yeah, so, before you leave tonight, we're taking, take care of that, so. Thank you. Uh, we've just had that...
Just one signature, isn't it?
Pardon me? Yes.
Just one signature.
Yeah. Okay, and the traffic ordinance, we just didn't want it to fall off the, the table, but we've got some...
This is a, a, aside on the traffic ordinance, the issue that came up on High Street presumably has been addressed. Zoning administrator has talked with the daycare manager, and the car that's there will not be there. There was a parking issue on, on the street, so.
Anything else for Highway? Motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The only thing, we've already talked about Casella.
Yeah.
And we will be having a meeting here on the ninth of January to talk about the Willow Street Pump Station flooding problems, and the investigations that we did for infiltration inflow, as to why it gets hit so hard. The engineers will be here and to come up with a plan. We will be filling out an application to be included on the priority list for state funding for a design phase of the project, and that will be back on your desk probably on the first meeting in February. But that one is moving along. We will hopefully be doing some minor construction out there this year, so that we don't end up with the problem we had last year, where we really got flooded out. The improvement, we're working away, the construction is supposed to be starting sometime in April, and we go from there. Delinquency list, I highlighted the yellow ones, that's on John's list. We're not looking to shut anybody down in the next two weeks, but after the first of the year. There's about three on here that would require the installation of a curb stop. That probably won't happen until they get thought again, but the other four should be available. And we haven't made any telephone calls on this go-around.
I'm sure you're gonna anyway, but I'd like to give John a little leeway on digging in the winter here.
Well, he's not gonna dig in the winter.
Yeah.
I thought you said when it thawed out.
No, well, when it thawed out in the spring.
You're talking about spring.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. All right. Good. But these others we can deal with.
There's some we can deal with, yes.
Right.
Do you know which ones?
Uh, he has the list, and he was putting check marks. He was verbally putting check marks, but I wasn't manually putting check marks.
Sure.
I'd rather have him come back with his check marks.
No problem.
Chris Hayes did bring in the cookies. We will be sitting down with him to come up with a plan to address all the items that are on the bottom of his monthly report, that are there month after month.
Repair issues?
Repairs of sewer lines, cleaning, and, you know, it's, the laundry list is at the bottom, additional items or needed items.
So I have a question. Number seven on this list, I, I see that there is a new agreement, however, that still isn't enough to cover the current year. So was there any talk of any other funding for her?
The note that was on the report you got two weeks ago, which I didn't copy onto this one, is the house will be for sale in the spring. And whether she's got it for sale, or somebody else has got it for sale, I'm not sure, but her comment was, it'll be in the spring.
Anything else for Water?
How are we coming on our fire hydrants that are out of service?
We aren't. We haven't had any activity on them, other than by talking with John and, and trying to get together with Chris with this list of what, what needs to be done.
Okay, motion to go into Board of Sewer Commissioners. Okay, motion to go into Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Garden Street was root intrusion two feet outside the manhole. It was easy to find once they found the manhole because it, it was covered up with about eighteen inches of dirt. So it was an expensive proposition, but it was, it's inside our right of way and I'm afraid it's on our, our hook to, to repair it, but it was roots, uh, they broke it out, cleaned it up and hopefully it won't happen again, but.
Well, another one to have in the book as far as where it is then.
Yeah, we, we got, we recorded now that there is a manhole there.
Yeah. Anything for the, else for the Board of Sewer Commissioners? Yeah. Uh, standing committees, anybody have a particular?
The only thing I have is the public hearing the day after Christmas.
Day after Christmas?
Mm-hmm.
Now, the town plan is just about done. We're on our final drafts and write this kind of a legal document more than anything.
Great. Okay, uh, moving back, well, should have had that before the standing committees, but we're back into the Regoire Select Board. I think everybody's signed and reviewed the, the bills. We took care of the, the vacancy on the, uh, planning and zoning board. Police Services Coverage Committee, anything? Okay. And, uh, in your packet was the, some of the things, uh, on our fraud risk assessment and, uh,
I've scheduled Rick Breger to come in by telephone at the next meeting. We, I tried to get him tonight and he was busy, so to explain how, how difficult this is and how time consuming it could be for board members.
Uh, we just keep that out, uh, and open and he'll be here. Uh, you haven't really set up a, a particular date then?
Oh, yeah, the next, the next meeting.
The, the next one.
He'd be invited guest the next meeting by phone.
Yep, okay, great.
And, and the question I praise to him is how much time is it going to be? The select board going to be involved in it?
Yeah.
Because the staff can't be, staff will be involved, but, uh, you're the ones who have to do the questioning.
Sure. Okay, investment advisor. Want to think on that after hearing, uh,
I don't think there's anything to decide yet because we're not doing-
No, there's really nothing.
Well, you, you need, you need to engage an advisor so that you can have an answer for town meeting. The answer is how much are you going to, what revenues will you see from investments? If you were to put the million and a half or whatever.
Well, I asked-
And, and I don't know if there's, I'm not capable or willing to come up with that number. If a member of the board is willing to say this is the number, you can do it.
Well, I honestly think I was mostly impressed by her than the other two actually that we had previously.
Yes, her take rate is, you know, far below.
Yeah, I mean, the rev, the, you know, distributions were much greater than the other two.
Yes.
And she was clear on explaining, you know?
Yes.
Uh, she would invest what our returns would be, what their fees would be.
Yes, she was-
It was much clearer.
Yeah, so I think if we have to go to town meeting with something, we would say if we chose to go this route, we would probably lean towards them if we all agreed and-
I agree.
Yeah, and, uh-
And I think going back to her and saying, can you give us more solid numbers? Cause if we have a town meeting, they're not going to say, well, you know, they're not going to want to hear we're going to get five percent to seven percent.
Yeah. What I would hope would be a one-page bulleted saying, this is what you can anticipate from our seventy-year plan. Uh, if you want to talk, and I don't know if you want to talk about socially responsible or not, but that's investing in, we're not investing in companies which, uh, sell cigarettes, sell vaping, and sell, for a while it was, uh, companies who were selling stuff for, in South Africa before the apartheid. I mean, a lot of this is, you know, socially responsible. It probably has a little lower yield than what you would get from a full-fledged and then their short-term fund, but.
But they seem flexible to, uh, anything that we might ask and sounds though they're go, going to be, would be right there if we had a question and-
Can we, uh, get into this in January? See if we could, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Stan or one of us caller and ask for, you know, what we need and, good.
Yeah, so we've got some time to maybe, uh, you know, nail that down. Anything new on the, the wall? It's just going to wait till spring.
Well, they, they were over here washing it off today.
Oh.
So that's why there was, you know, you, you said there was a slick spot on one of the landings. They were here washing it off because it was above forty degrees.
Yeah.
So they were cleaning up, what they were washing off was the, when they, uh, ground the holes for the posts, the dust.
Yeah.
And the dust was there and we wanted it cleaned off, so. I, I didn't know they were here, but, uh, Rhoda said that they were coming in and getting water to, to go out and wash it with.
Uh, the environmental review stand?
It's sitting at the state, uh, we have, I've got to go learn how to get online and I need to call up there because I keep looking through their, uh, file and, and can't find the tab that hits environmental review. She told me it was there by letter and I haven't found it. However, I have, uh, engaged a expert in managing projects through the, uh, environmental or the Community Development Program. Uh, she works for the city of Rutland and, uh, they respect her very much in Montpelier. And when I said, uh, the name, well, they said, very good, thank you. Uh, we have money in our budget for administrative. It was my time and Celia's time that we're going to devote over to a consultant's time and, and get it done. Because if you looked at the questions they asked on the conditions, one of it was project management. Are you capable of doing this? And I guess I didn't want to say I was capable of doing it, especially if I can't get in and find the right tab to hit.
Yeah.
So I will be coming back with an agreement for, I asked her to send us over a proposal that we can act on.
Junk ordinance amendment?
Junk ordinance amendment. Back on, uh, November twelfth, you adopted the draft ordinance. Uh, somewhere between then and now, I didn't go back in and make the changes and get it published. And if you look right in the center of it, it has to be within fourteen days of the meeting. We missed the fourteen days. What I'm asking for today is to adopt the outdoor display or storage of discarded items, junk and junk vehicles. And then I will promptly get this thing advertised.
Do we need to-
I need a motion tonight.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will have an original before you leave that, uh, instead of getting on my desk that we can sign and get it done.
Yes. Okay, we get that taken care of and, uh, let the timeframe run out here. Okay, um, twenty-two Terrace Hill?
The letter has still not been served. The sheriff said he would serve it last week, so I will get it to them to serve. I keep leaving telephone messages.
And in the packet was the, uh, list of vehicles.
And only one has been removed.
It was removed before the letter was received because he, somebody told him he was going to get a letter. But, uh, what I'm doing is keeping a log as I get the green return receipts back as to when the thirty days start. And, uh, there's only one different than, uh, what was on your list, so.
I didn't see anyone at, um, on, at eleven Market Street. A car there.
Eleven Market Street?
Yeah. I didn't see any extra cars. They used to have like three, now they only have one.
Used to have three, now there's one? This is what the sheriff gave me.
Right, yeah, cause I, I just happened to go by there and I looked over and I don't remember seeing another one.
Uh, we've had a couple of them which were address glitches and, uh, we sent it to the wrong person. It was their neighbor that should have gotten it. I didn't check the addresses. I just pulled off the addresses off in here and got the owners. So we've got two of them that are going to get, get the letter. Uh, as soon as the Sheriff's Department gets back with the proper address.
Uh, I think he owns his brother's house who just passed away. That's my guess.
Oh, okay.
Uh, you know, a little ranch house there.
I thought there was going to be some,
Okay.
Some letters to the select board from some of the people. Uh, however, I haven't seen any yet.
I'll make sure you, they're in big boxes and they're ticking okay.
And I got one column that people who have called me, so those are the people who have called. And, uh, they've all got good reasons why they should have their vehicle there.
Those, that's where the X's are?
And, and what I, from my standpoint as the administrator of it is unregistered and/or uninspected is the definition of junk.
Yeah.
The board can do elsewise on a policy statement, but I, the sheriff and I are, and all we can do is say this is what the ordinance reads.
No, I think we need to, uh, present a united front here.
Yes. Okay. Town manager search. We need to move on that, uh. We want to, uh, go along and, uh, make a decision on, uh, on BLCT. I think they're experienced and maybe get a wider range on maybe the applicants, uh.
I mean, I think they're, it's an advantage to have them for like advertising, um, and helping like to write, you know, a job description. Other than that, it's a lot of money for-
Well, correct me if-
I'm with you on that. I, I think it's a lot of money for them not to really, they're not really doing what it is that we wanted them to do.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't put a lot of money in last year in the budget for-
Get two thousand dollars in this current year's budget for the search process.
Yeah. But we have-
Seven thousand in for overlap.
Yeah.
Maybe after you hire a new guy, gal.
But we've got to get started on it.
Well, what is their, refresh my memory, what is, what is the amount that they're asking for, for what work?
I think there was a range, but it was up to nine thousand dollars.
Yes, and-
I think I have their proposal in my packet.
I, I think we need to tweak their list a little bit there, what we want them to do. She was talking about international advertising and-
Well, once you were-
Like if we advertise on their newsletter, you know, like their-
There's no cost for that though.
It should, now it's a member.
Right, there's no cost.
Right, there's no cost, yeah, so, and then, and then if we, you know, cause that could seem by anybody looking for a municipal, you know, make them look for and stuff. And then we could advertise it on the lead. I mean, I, I just feel like if, if they got like thirty up, that's all they're going to do is pull their resumes and then, here, and we got them in the mail and now here they are. They're not doing anything with them.
Yeah, there was a cost. They would, you know, take thirty and reduce it to five for us, but there was a cost for that.
Now, try to find the proposal that this-
Cause at the end they wouldn't do that because they, they got, I think they got bit before by choosing the wrong candidates. And so they don't want to be part of it.
They got a two-headed quarter.
Yeah, so that's my theory.
We could also ask the other person what it would cost, what we're looking for.
Cause I mean, the majority of work is, is going through the resumes and deciding who looks like good candidates and then interviewing them. And they're not any part of that.
Right.
And that's the part that we were looking for, correct?
Right. So.
I mean, as far as questions and stuff.
I haven't got it in my book.
And interviews and HR stuff.
Well, you want to fire that out to us because we, we need to-
There, there were a number of different costs for different activities.
Yeah.
And I don't-
I have it from the last meeting, but I don't have it with me.
Well, that, me either. I don't, I don't know if, if we want to go with them or if we want to cost compare.
I mean, maybe you like revisit the, what she sent us and see if, if we could pick and choose.
Yeah, I, I'm sure we can and, and-
I mean, advertising would be good just so we don't have to bother.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to hear a little more about this other person too.
We've worked with her in the past and she's very professional, very good at her job. Yeah, I know her too, yeah. But again, it's cost.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. And BLCT reaches a very wide, um, audience.
Yeah, so.
And there, does she work with BLCT a little bit too, or?
Not really with them, um, but I think we need to ask BLCT if we're paying for advertising how much and where we're advertising. Cause maybe we want to kind of do both. Maybe we want to use her to narrow it down and use them to advertise if we can get that within some kind of reasonable amount.
That would be nice, yes.
So maybe we should look at both for two different reasons.
We want to ask that other person to come in, uh, the next meeting because I, I'm just afraid we're going to keep, we've got to keep moving.
Yes, yeah, I would like to have her come in, ask a few questions here.
Yeah.
You know, if she's willing to do-
In the meantime, we'll look at the other costs.
Yeah.
It would be nice to narrow it down.
You want to get ahold of that person?
Yeah, Abby.
Huh? This other-
Oh, the other, the other person? Yes, I'll be happy to.
Yeah, and, uh, arrange to have her here at the next meeting.
I would also say that the school would probably be more than willing to allow you to, um, set up a library these time if you have applicants that, um,
At a distance?
Yeah, I mean, that's currently what we're doing, so, um, I'm sure that we could work something out so that will work in the evening that you could meet and talk about there these times.
Do they do just FaceTime through or do they Skype too when you set it that way?
Yes, Skype, yeah, Skype.
Okay, okay, what kind of, a little more?
Uh, well, it's a, I'm a big board, I mean, I-
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. There we go.
That allows you options to see people that you might not necessarily choose.
Ah, town report. Town report. Time to start... The letters went out to the committees, chairs, to get responses back. The select board has to write a report. Bruce has volunteered to decide which are the critical items that need to be reported on rather than giving them a copy of the minutes of every meeting, so. What I've done in the past is I go through the minutes of the past year, pick out the hot topics. I'll give them to Bruce and say, "Here's what you talked about during the year. Which ones do you wanna expand on in the report?"
Could we ask all our committees and everything to, you know, cut it a little bit shorter here to cut our cost a little bit, possibly?
Well, I've limited them to one page. The other one, of course, is the ten service organizations that we publish in the town report. I've limited them to one page. Couple of them came in with more and I sent it back and said, "Please rewrite." But I think, to me, that's important that they do report to the town because in there they quote... Some of them quote statistics of how many people in Proctor they have assisted doing whatever they do, whether it's mentoring or whether it's a child or whether it's something else. Now Habitat doesn't do anything and hasn't done anything in Proctor, but they're doing work in other places. So I've got the reports. I think I've got all of them now. What I'll do is just put together a packet so that the board can be aware, but traditionally, we put them all in. And how much difference does it make, the cost? I think one of the items that did come up on the town report was whether we include the fifty to fifty-five page town audit or whether we put in one page which says the audit is available at the town office.
Yeah, I think that's...
Alls I really wanna hear is, "Did we pass the audit?" I don't care about all of them.
But, yeah, you could get a one-page letter from the auditor which will say, "It is here." We did have, when we proposed it a number of years ago, we had some objections from some of the residents who said the audit should be in the report. It should be delivered to my... It has to be available ten days before town meeting, but it does not have to be published. That would cut out fifty-four pages, fifty-five pages.
Yes. Now, if we don't wanna mail a town report to every home in town, did you mention earlier that had to be voted on?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to see that on the...
Arm the ballot again.
The warning this March.
Agreed.
We are one of the few towns, I believe, around you. Does the Rutland City mail to every home?
No, they don't.
Right.
Smaller towns.
I know Lester doesn't... Let's come and pick one up if you want one.
Right.
See, what we do is we both mail it to every resident.
Yes.
Which means that some property owners do not get a copy.
Yeah.
Because it only goes... It goes to their tenant rather than to them. Some towns...
So you mail to every resident?
We mail to every resident.
Every property owner?
Not necessarily the property owner.
So let's not mail any.
Well, that's... We advertise that it's available.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's... We had the vote here, as I say, a few years ago and it got defeated.
Yeah.
And I haven't brought it back up again.
Let's try it again.
Yeah.
Yep, I'd be glad to speak to that.
Yeah, 'cause that's a four-thousand-dollar item.
Yeah, or more, I'll bet, yeah.
And how many did you print, did you say?
Eight-hundred and fifty.
And you said it was three thousand dollars or something like that?
Four thousand something.
I think we should... I think you should go out for an RFP and I think you should... We're supposed to if it's over... If it's that much. If it's over three thousand dollars, we should be getting proposals from other printers.
Meaning the postage?
No, for the printing.
Oh, oh, you quote? I'm afraid I've been gone back to the same one who is... Who gave us the best bid three years ago by considerably.
Well, I'm saying... Okay, so I print an annual report every year. Ours is, what, a hundred and seventy-eight pages long? We print three thousand of them and we pay like thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
And we have colored photos and...
And who do you use?
I... This year and last year, I went through, um... Oh, my God. I'm blanking out from Williston. Stillwater Graphics.
Good Water Graphics?
Stillwater.
Stillwater.
And they're... I don't know if the girls here, who puts them together, if you create the actual report and just send it to them to print?
I create the report by page.
Right.
And the order in which they are to be printed.
Okay, 'cause that's what I do, too, and they're awesome. 'Cause all I do is put it in a drop box to them. They send me a proof. I just change it, they redo it, and boom. And I have it... Honestly, I've... When I've given them the final proof, I've had them like within five days.
Well, that's not what that guy said in the paper.
Oh, that's... Oh, that's because...
Any ones like we do or they the small ones like...
We... I changed it to six by nine.
Yeah, so why don't... Have we looked to go back to that? We're taking it, all this stuff out. That was one of the reasons that we went to the larger one, if you recall.
It's always been the larger one since I've been here, yeah.
No.
No, it used to always be the small one. And so we went to the larger one because of the audit and things like that. And there were only so many pages they said you could take in turn to make it feasible. As they got fatter, we had to go to the larger one, they said. It has the more of a book binding, I guess, on it. But most towns have the smaller. That's what we used to always have.
When you check on the price, you could ask.
Well...
Right.
You know, the different size. Six by nine. Could... What font are they in? Can you read it?
Look at the phone book, yeah.
It's probably... Most is like a ten font.
That's all?
It's very logical.
Yeah, 'cause ours is...
Other than the headings, they're bigger.
Ours is in the twelve. Or has been in the twelve.
People only flip to three sections in it, doesn't matter.
Yeah, who didn't pay?
I'll bring you one if you want.
There was a delay with the post office last year.
Post office took more than five days to deliver them.
They sat them on them, yes.
I mean, that's what they advertise is that within five days after they receive them, they will be distributed. We didn't get five days last year.
So we gotta get them sooner this year.
Well, I... Yeah, my discussions and timing is to get them more than the five days to get them out. Of course, we did have the high schools deliver them one year.
Yeah, and that was a problem.
Well, they delivered multiple years. They didn't just deliver them one year. So that's not true, that it was maybe one year, but they've delivered multiple years.
Yes, they've delivered, I think, two or three years.
They've delivered for many a year.
They have, not since I've been here.
Well...
In the last eight years, they've delivered three years. The select board delivered them one year. That was before I came. They actually went out and hand-carried and delivered them. The town crew did them one year when I was here, they delivered them. And their only problem was they stuck them in the mailboxes. We got a nasty letter from the postmaster saying he was gonna charge us first-class postage for every one of them. He never did. Then we did this...
If you want the school to deliver them, it's something the school could do and you could probably look at, um, just like, no different than when we do hand drives, segmenting the community and a different class does in a different area. So it's something that the school could do for community service. I would think maybe Ben as an advisor would be interested in with his class. I'm sure that my class would be interested in doing that, but there has to be some conversation from the select board and the town more than ten days for, you know, that they want it to be done so that there can be some organization about that.
It ended up right in the middle of vacation schedule, which I thought was a time to do it, but some people were out of town. And we did have a problem. We did have some areas that didn't get delivered.
You mean last year?
What's that?
Last year, you mean, or before?
Oh, last year. It was... Last year, we did it by boat mail. It was... There were two years that the school did it.
So if that's something the town's interested in, I'm happy to take it and to speak to it and have advisors emailed and look at dividing up the town, but that's a conversation that needs to be had so that we have plenty of time to make a plan for that. So I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation and it's a good community service for students, um, so...
Yeah, the town donated four hundred dollars each year that the school delivered them to... It was a senior class. So it was a fundraiser for them as well, as well as community...
It doesn't have to be a fundraiser, it could just be community service. I don't think everything has to be a fundraiser. If different classes are doing it, if one class is doing, you know, Hospital Hill, one class is doing Garden of Eden, one thought, you know, the etc. It doesn't have to be a... It doesn't have to have a cost attached to it. It can simply be community service.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. And then put it on for next year, not delivering.
Yes. That'll be on the warning in March.
It'll be on the... Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we cut out the delivery and have them available.
Thank you.
Are we also doing the... We talked once about the dedication in the report about doing it for Mrs. Kennedy. Are we doing that?
If you say do it, we do it. You didn't act on it at the last meeting.
No, I know, we didn't. We talked about it. I'm fine with that. And then putting a photo on... One of Dale's photos on the cover?
Yeah, the inside front cover is what we've done.
Right, but then we... Put a photo on the cover, right?
Well, no.
Yes.
Not necess... We did one year... We did one year. We put a photo on the cover.
And the dedication inside?
Yeah. The other years, the dedication and the photo have been on the inside.
Side, yeah.
I think we should stay with that.
Right, that's what I just said.
On the inside front cover.
I think the thought was the streetlights on the cover and the dedication.
Well, he sent a whole bunch. Did you see these today? These are awesome.
Oh, I didn't see them.
I like that one with the town office, the better than...
I like... Yeah, I like this one. 'Cause it shows like the flag.
And it's the new wall.
And the lights, streetlights?
I like that one.
The other one was twenty-seven, which got you a little more look up the street as well as showing the front of the building.
That car wasn't parked over there, it'd look a lot better.
Well, we may be able to Photoshop him right out.
I just printed those three.
Yeah, do you mind if we...
What I asked Dale to do is to bring in... Because my printer doesn't show the whole picture. It's to bring in a glossy...
Right.
It's to...
Yeah.
With it cleaned up, the way he would do it, do it.
Sure. For... I make a motion that we have Mrs. Kennedy dedicate the annual report to her. And then we chose a photo for the front cover.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I don't have a problem with someone picking the picture.
No, yeah. Okay.
So was... I'm sorry, was the select board interested in having the kids deliver or you're passing on that option?
I said I was in favor of it, but I didn't know if anybody else was. I mean, I would be fine if they did it.
I have no problem with it. And I'd be happy to help.
Listen, if it's something you're interested in, we need to know so we can discuss it at the January class meetings.
I think my only thing would be when it's coming out and if there's gonna be enough students. And I only say that because I, two years in a row, have had to come to the town office and get my town report, which is no big deal. It's not that far away. Two years in a row.
Well, last year was mailed, so that didn't have anything to do with it.
Right, but two years in a row, that my whole side of the street, nothing.
I guess, is the board going to ask the school if they will do it?
I'm fine with it. I don't see any problem with it.
No?
Yeah.
Well, say yes or no.
Yes.
Just curious, does the school board contribute to the cost of the town report?
The school board prints their annual report.
Okay, um, so can we eliminate the school portion to save a few more dollars?
The only thing that was in, if I remember last year, was the agenda... The be... The agenda... And the minute... The article to be voted on on town meeting plus the report.
Okay, I must... I must be thinking back a few years.
Well, before, we had the full report in there.
Yeah.
Right.
Now it's just a very simple letter type thing.
One page?
I think there was... I think there was... It ended up with two. You had the minutes of the last meeting, the agenda, the article that's gonna be voted on. Presented.
It could've been two or three pages.
Okay.
But it's not many pages, no.
Okay, uh...
So before we end, are you taking that to the school and taking care of that? Are you taking that... How is that getting to the schools?
So I'm going to speak with the principal and we're going to discuss it at class meetings. And we will take a copy of the town and we will divide the town up per class and we'll have these two adults responsible for making sure that they are delivered, so...
Awesome, I just wanted to make sure somebody was actually going to the school so that it got done. Thank you very much.
Would they do that on a weekend, do you think, or not necessarily?
I guess it will depend when Stan has them, so...
It's dependent on when it comes out.
I can guarantee one class.
I can guarantee one class.
There you go.
And I can guarantee that they won't be delivered from those classes without issue, so...
Okay, so we've resolved three things. We're gonna ask the school to deliver. We expect they will. We have a dedication inside front cover with a... And I assume that Lisa, write up?
Sure.
Yeah. And the front cover, something with the snow and the streetlights.
Yeah.
And hopefully the new railing and stuff.
Yeah, the new rail... Yeah, yeah.
I prefer the town office pictures, but...
You like the front one rather than the side view, which had a little bit of the Karis Real building in it? Because I was gonna suggest putting at the bottom a caption saying, "The streetlights, thank you, Karis Real, Marvel Company, and town voters."
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
You will see something like that on the cover. Like we did last year with Beaver Pond where we gave... That they donated the land.
Yeah. Okay, good. You got your budget reports in the packet?
We do.
And everything we... What's...
Stan, I just had a question. After the changes, what is the percentage of increase?
Yeah, I didn't fill that one in and I got it penciled in on my copy, so... If you... Pull them out, if you go on the pink copy, the proposed budget as of twelve sixteen nineteen, the increase in the town general fund was five percent. You can pencil that in. The increase in the highway department was eight percent and the total increase was six percent. If you go to the blue column, which is the changes that you made at the last meeting, the general fund was four percent. The highway fund was a minus three percent for a net of one percent.
So that's what the people are gonna see, one percent?
Well, that's, you know... What I put in is a memo because you asked me for some items and I gave you the information on what a two percent instead of a three percent salary increase would be. And there's my memo. And that added up to twenty-three hundred dollars. Twenty-three hundred and sixty-one dollars are going from three percent to two percent. The, going from the platinum to the gold ended up at nineteen thousand five hundred. That's, these are the numbers that are in the blue column, plus all of the other items that you did. I personally have a problem with cutting both of those. What I've got below at the bottom of my memo was if you took the forty-five thousand dollars out of the highway budget. You essentially have a zero increase in the highway budget. If you take the forty-five thousand, same forty-five, out of the total budget, you have a three percent increase. Those were the parameters that I think you were giving me last meeting was zero on highway, three percent total.
Yeah, I, I must have missed something. I thought we were just going to consider reducing from platinum to gold for new hires.
You talked about that and I suggested that you not do it.
Okay, I.
Because I don't know, we're only gonna have one new hire for half a year, yeah, coming up.
Correct.
But what you're saying is from now on forever have it as.
That's right. Any new employee. Cause we've got a assistant town clerk coming on too here in a year.
Yep, next, this time next year, there will be a new assistant town clerk.
In five years, we'll have.
But that has to be a policy change. I will write you a change in the policy if that's the way the board wants to go. Is that new hires after a certain date, which would be the first of January of two thousand, well, the first of July of two thousand twenty.
Well, let's find out. I make a motion that all new hires will be on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Gold Plan, not the Platinum Plan.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will write up a policy change for your employee policy. I will go back through that and redo the budget. And it will, it will show a minor decrease in the town clerk's budget. But you're looking for the future and not for necessarily twenty-one.
Well, the new town manager will be with the gold plan also.
Yes. Well, as I say, that could be, that will be what the policy will have in it, yes.
Yeah, let's take a look at that.
So there, so there'll be two items, you're right.
Yeah.
The other item that we took out, that you took out, was the internet connections at the rink and the pool.
I just, how come there's such a big difference between the two?
One is three months and the other is a year.
Okay.
And the pool is, and the rink is a year-long operation now, the way they're, way they're running it.
Okay, even in the summer, we keep the internet.
We have special events going on all summer down there.
Okay. I'm still, you know, as far as I'm concerned, those are two outdoor activities and, you know, if they choose to, the managers choose to. Let them sit there and play on their phones, it's up to them to provide the service.
And I guess what I am looking at is that we have a park and recs committee who have asked for it as part of their program.
I'm, I'm with Tom. I just don't believe that at the pool and at the skating rink that you need internet. You're there to do outdoor recreation, not to be on your phone. And it's worked well in the past. I mean, ten years ago, there wasn't internet in cell phones at the pool or the rink.
Yeah, but if we're gonna have possibly open that up to. You know, up people outside Proctor. And on the pool.
I mean, I can see the rink having it before I could the pool. Cause they're open and they do allow stuff in the doors too as well. So maybe to have them explain this, yeah.
The rink, the rink currently is funded out of the donation bucket.
Right.
Or it has been in for the last year and a half. The pool is no, there is no donation bucket. And it's, and it's a nominal sum. And I guess I'm, I'm leaning toward the recommend, well, I leaned toward it because I put it in, the recommendation of the park and rec committee. Which are doing some pretty good stuff for us.
I'm sorry, I stand by.
When do we meet again?
Park and rec, be the second, second Wednesday. The park and rec would be the second Wednesday of the month. Now, they probably, if you don't put it in, will get somebody to donate it.
That's what I figure. They're gonna go to Mornham Proctor to find somebody.
Well, they, they won't go to Mornham Proctor. They'll go to an individual who has helped them quite a bit on different things.
Yep.
Yeah, because our next meeting will be the thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
And theirs is the fifteenth?
It's, no. Theirs would be the eighth.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Second Wednesday. But I will, no, I take it out here because that's what you've done. I'll go back and through and make the re-changes that you did. As far as the gold for the new salaries. You want two percent, you want three percent?
For an increase?
Yeah.
I can live with either one.
For everybody or?
Yeah.
Um, we, we are low on the pay scale.
We, we are. I, I printed out, or I don't think I handed it to you, the highway crew from the leagues of the various communities near us. And it went from eighteen sixty-six to twenty-three for crew members. It were proposed at nineteen ten.
Yeah, I'd like.
And any new hires, we are, you know, cutting their insurance.
Yeah, so let's go with three and.
Yeah.
And, and see, it already cut the rate for the assistant town clerk treasurer.
Yeah.
From twenty-three to seventeen, I think.
For me?
Yes, let's keep it at three.
Yeah.
It's awful expensive to lose an employee for.
It is. And knock on wood, we've had no oopses, you know?
Yeah, and they've been good about, you know, they haven't abused our insurance. We had a drop in their insurance cost.
Yes.
I did put in your packet on, on your desk, the difference between the gold and the, but now that, what you're doing now is, is something different than what I was expecting to do.
I know the utility I used to work for has changed their medical insurance plan a lot more than this for new hires.
For new hires, yeah.
What's that?
For new hires?
Yes.
Any questions on the sheriff's department report?
Stan, not, not to be pushy, but there was two sheriffs in town today. This sometime.
I don't know why there were two sheriffs in town.
There was one sitting down at Goren Bridge on the Proctor side and there was one sitting at the five corners this afternoon, both at the same time. Not, I mean, if you're talking to one of them, fine. It'll be in the report next.
Whether there was something, whether one of them was here doing something, but they were both sitting, right? They were, they weren't in a house interviewing somebody.
They were both sitting in their cars, just parked, yeah.
And I don't think one was the sheriff, right?
I don't think so. No, he drives a nice SUV there.
Anything else tonight?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Our bike pedestrian path committee has done a good job over the last few years. They tried to do South Street, did a lot of work. Uh, we didn't get the grant. It didn't work out. They did from the park up to Beaver Pond now. That worked out well. I'd like to ask the board if we could ask them to keep going. Now we stop at Beaver Pond. Do we wanna, you know, let them decide if we're gonna go to Florence? Are we gonna go down to West Proctor Road? Where are we gonna go from there?
Extend from the, the end of the.
Yes, yeah, we're gonna meet Pittsford or we're gonna meet West Rottland somewhere. Are we gonna, what are we gonna do? Right now, we just dead end off the carriage trail on, at Beaver Pond.
Yeah, the scoping study does include signage on Beaver Pond Road and Florence Road, shared use. So that, so that they would get you back to the, to the village area. But it doesn't go to Pittsford. It doesn't look at the, the old right-of-way, Clarity, Pittsford, right-of-way.
Right.
Or getting to West Rottland.
Right, and these bicycle people today, I mean, they're, they're covering ten miles and what a car covers it in almost.
You shouldn't have talked while, while Steve was still here.
Well.
Let, let me do two things. One is to look at both West Rottland and Pittsford to see if they are interested in doing something more. Two is, is the cost to put signage on Beaver Pond Road and Florence Road at North Street that would bring you back to the five corners again.
Why don't we let the committee do that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, you know, we got people in town here. Let's, let's use them. They're interested. They did a, you know, worked on it for several years here and now we just, you know, thanks, see you later. Um, speaking on that, where do we stand on, the bike ped pass out here?
Right now, we were diverted away from the original alignment, which was to go through the quarry property to go around Market Street and come back in the back way. Uh, that has changed. Frank has changed his development plans. Uh, I expect that shortly after the first of the year, we will come up with a final alignment through the quarry property that he will accept. And clarification is that we don't have to own fee simple. An easement is more than adequate. Uh, he was concerned about snow, snow machines on it and there's no problem there. We got clarification from the agency on that. Is that at least consensual machines could use it? Because you're not gonna have too many people out there riding their bikes up there when the snow machine is coming. Right now, it's, it's setting up for survey for the quarry property. Uh, that's where Vanessa Harg, yeah, DHB is right now is to start surveying that so that they can do the final alignment. And again, this is a two-year project before we get to the construction phase.
So we're not looking at construction this summer?
We're not gonna, cause, no, we're not gonna look at construction this summer. The estimate that was given was inflated to twenty twenty-two, construction year.
And that would be good for the committee to start looking ahead.
What's, what's the next project?
Yes. If the board agrees.
Well, I, I'll call the committee meeting and see where they wanna go from there, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to make sure members agreed first to do something.
Cause it just stopped. I think it should. So we kinda skipped over the police services and coverage committee and I just want to report that we're meeting with Pittsford and we're. To speak more on police coverage with them.
You're, you're meeting with them?
So I have a question, um, and you spoke earlier about, um, the pool, said you're opening that to outside residents, I guess. How are you looking at addressing parking to that? And have you thought about, or do you have the limit and the number of permits that you're selling for outside residents? Since we've been very, we've been very involved in, um, on street parking and addressing parking. And if you live in that area and there's any kind of events going on or tapestries getting picked up at the end of the day. It's incredibly busy there.
No, we're near as busy as the grade school.
Maybe not.
Getting picked up.
That, that doesn't address the question that if, it's no different than when we talk about other entities. If we're inviting more people, where are they parking? Cause even at a limited number of people at the pool now, the parking lot is often filled with capacity. Cause it seems like everyone drives.
I, I haven't seen it filled to a capacity.
The parking lot?
Yes, the parking lot, yeah.
It gets often filled.
With school kids, yeah. The school kids.
Does it make a difference with the parking lots, people that park there during, I'm talking in the pools, but I'm not talking during school. So, I mean, people are currently now parking along both sides of the street there during pickup. So I'm just, I'm just inquiring if you're opening it up, how the select board will be addressing parking in that area.
Well, I have to ask the rec committee what they think.
I honestly, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but I don't really think it's gonna draw a lot of people in. I really don't.
I don't see it, no, a few.
Yeah.
Most, most parents work today. It's gonna be hard for them to bring.
And a lot of the kids who do go, like, you know, the older ones or something, they'll, they'll go to the other pools, just cause. It's a different scenario. It's, it's a different type of pool. So that's my take on it. I mean, I can't speak, you know, I don't, I don't. I can't see like all of a sudden fifty new kids are gonna be showing up in Proctor to go to that pool. They could, but.
Well, and that also speaks to the question whether tapestry needs to be picked up there. Cause tapestry could be picked up at the school where tapestry is based.
Yep. I thought tapestry walked.
They walk down there, but then they have pickup there, but they don't have to have pickup there. If it became a problem, I mean, I can see that as a change. But I don't see, I don't see a lot of out-of-town people coming during the day, but we haven't really even gotten that far into how many permits or. I think it was just a question of whether we would open it up again to out-of-town people. I don't think it's gone very far.
And I would think that the overflow would go to the school, like if there was the need to park, that they could park in that school parking lot.
True. And then most, most towns already have a swimming pool. There's just a few towns that would possibly take advantage of.
I honestly think they come to the skating rink cause it's free. Everything, free skates, free skating, you know?
Free internet, free music.
Yeah, I think you gotta just see what happens and.
We can bring it up at the next.
Yeah, whether they're going to, are they gonna increase their hours of operation at the pool?
No, they're still talking noon to six.
And for us to have out-of-town people, we'd have to, we would have to change those hours for any interest at all.
I would think morning would be better anyway, just cause.
That's what they used to give them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they used to start at eight or nine in the morning, you know, when they had lessons and whatever.
How many, how many hours do you wanna stay open?
Yeah, I think that's.
I mean, that's, that gets to be, on my side, a budget, a budget question.
Right, but you could also, like, say you had lessons Tuesday, Thursdays and you opened up at eight and then you stayed open later on. and then you stayed open later on Monday, Wednesday, you know, something like that. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good thing for maybe the committee to, to look at.
Yeah, I don't think we should dictate hours.
No.
Well, I, I think too, we're looking for input from the committee as to whether that is even a viable option to open it back up.
Yeah, this was something that I think just got thrown up in the air for discussion.
But I think it's a good idea.
We will put it on the air agenda for discussion. We got, we got a couple of months to get by it.
Yes, yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.